Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the order of this meeting on the sixteenth of November, 2023 City of Nashville Planning Board. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson, Scott Leclerc.
Here.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Maggie Harper, Patricia Cle.
Here.
Dan Hudson.
Here.
Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Larry Hirsch.
Here.
Cameron Green.
Here.
Derek Tebow. So we do have a quorum.
Okay, I'd like to welcome Cameron Green to his first meeting here with us for the Planning Board. Welcome, Board. Glad to have you. Next up, we have minutes in the packet. There was minutes from the second of November meeting. Has anybody on the board had a chance to take a look at those minutes and want to make a motion as to whether they're ready for us to accept as written or need amendments? Mr. Ballinger?
Sorry.
All right, Mr. Varley, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I would make a motion to accept and approve the minutes as written from the November second, 2023 meeting.
All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Varley to accept the minutes of the November second, 2023, meeting as written. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Okay, that motion passes. Communications?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair and fellow members of the Planning Board. The following two correspondences were, came out after your agenda was posted onto the web. The first one is the Mohawk Tannery. Would like an extension from the proposed December seventh meeting to February fifteenth, 2024. And we have a letter from Joe Mandola, November sixteenth, 2023, comments on the 282 Daniel Webster Highway project.
Okay, thanks. Any reports from committees or liaisons? None? Okay. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and move forward with the agenda. I'm gonna go ahead and read the procedure of the meeting and hearings. So the procedure of the meeting and hearings are as follows. After each legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan, or subdivision is read by myself, the board will first determine if the application is complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction. If we do take jurisdiction, a public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or their representative will be given time to present an overview and description of their project, thus speak to whether or not they agree with their staffs, the recommended staff stipulations, and the board will have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. I'll next ask for testimony from the audience. I'll ask for anybody first wishing to speak in opposition or concerns of the plan may speak. This is your time to come forward to the microphones, state your name, address for the record, and also be a time to express any concerns or have any questions you may have on the plan. Next up, I'll ask for any testimony from anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The board will then ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. Then the applicant will be given a rebuttal period, at which time they can respond to any of the questions raised by the prior public testimony. After this has been completed, the board hearing will end, and then we'll begin a public meeting, at which time we'll deliberate and vote on the application before us. I ask that everyone keep their remarks to the subject in hand and not repeat what has already been said. The board wants to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and considering all our applicable approval criteria established in our national revised ordinances of conditional special use permits, site plans, and subdivision plans. I thank everybody for their interest and their attention. If you do have a cell phone, you can set it to vibrate or turn it off at this time. Thanks. Okay, so first up, I think we can take this as a, as a group here. Old Business Subdivision Plans is a case number eight twenty-three dash zero zero six six. This is that City of Nashville Blaylock Holdings LLC applicant, and it's sort of in conjunction with eight twenty-three dash zero zero six seven, eight twenty-three dash zero zero six eight. And I think there was also eight, the Old Business Site Plan, case eight twenty-three dash zero zero six nine, all for the same applicant. There's been a letter requesting this be postponed to February fifteenth, 2024, that letter being from the applicant. So for the board, is anybody on the board wanna, just, I guess we should make a motion as to whether we accept that postponement and to that date. Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I recommend that we accept their letter requesting postponement and postpone it, table it to February fifteenth, 2024 meeting.
Okay, so we have that motion by Alderman Cle to table those four items to February fifteenth, 2024. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any discussion?
Just, I have one clarifying question, and maybe just to add. Did we originally accept jurisdiction of these matters? I didn't think that the board had ever accepted jurisdiction.
I honestly don't recall because it's been quite a while.
Okay, it's just, it's just a minor point, but if it's, if we never accepted jurisdiction, we wouldn't be tabling them. We would just be continuing.
Postponing.
Continuing.
Continuing.
Well, and maybe staff can look into that and put the appropriate language in there.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to hold up the motion.
And I'm willing to go with whatever, to change the motion to be acceptance of the appropriate.
We have the engineer in the audience for that project. He might, might remember or recall. I don't want to put him on the spot.
I think he did take it, sure.
Okay, so it'd be a continuance.
It would be tabling that if we took jurisdiction.
Tabling, yeah.
Yeah, so that's fine.
Tabling? Okay, all right. So we have that motion to table. We had a second by Mr. Ballinger. That was the discussion. Any more discussion by the board? All those in favor of the tabling?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay, next up on the agenda, we have another old business. Let me make sure I got the right one here. First up is, and I'll probably take these two together again, too. This is Old Business Subdivision Plan, case number eight twenty-three dash zero one seven six. This is Law Realty Company, Inc., owner of the Law Family Companies, Inc. applicant, a proposed lot line relocation consolidation subdivision plan and boundary plan for properties located at three thirty-eight, three forty, three fifty, three fifty-two Amherst Street, and sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and thirty Airport Road. So I would, we'd want to hear this in conjunction with Old Business Site Plan, case number eight twenty-three dash zero one seven five, same applicant, but that being for a proposed one-story, fifteen thousand one hundred square foot retail building along with associated site improvements, that property being located at three fifty Amherst Street. All right, so.
Do you want to recuse yourself?
Okay, yep, go for it. Thanks. All right, so with those, first up for the subdivision plan, for the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at that application, want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction over case eight twenty-three dash zero one seven six.
All right, so we have the motion to take jurisdiction of the subdivision plan, eight twenty-three dash zero one seven six. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Varley. Any further discussion by the board on the jurisdiction? All those in favor of taking jurisdiction?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So we have that jurisdiction. Now, with regard to Old Business Site Plan, eight twenty-three dash zero one seven five, Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction over case eight twenty-three dash zero one seven five.
All right, so we have that motion to take jurisdiction as well with case number eight twenty-three dash zero one seven five by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second? Second by Alderman Cle. Any further discussion by the board on that jurisdiction? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. We have jurisdiction. Okay, you can present those together.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Welcome, Mr. Green. My name is Jim Petropolis. I'm a professional engineer with Hayner Swanson, Inc., doing business at Three Congress Street in Nashville, New Hampshire tonight, representing the Law Family Companies. With me is Brian Law and his wife Lori. Also with me is Dick Kane. He's a project coordinator for this work. And it's just read into the record, I'm really gonna be presenting two, two cases, a plan of land and then subsequently a site plan. So I'll be presenting those both at the same time. Before I get started, I'd like to just get the board situated, get them located with regard to the property, and show you the various parcels owned by our client out on Amherst Street. And I've prioritized the holdings in red. There's a total of thirteen parcels currently under ownership by the Law Family Companies, a total of about thirty-four and a half acres in size. These lots are along Amherst Street to the north, Airport Road on the west side of the holdings, and then Sharon Ave to the east. Now, most of these parcels are occupied by actively leased tenants, commercial and industrial tenants. But over the next several years, the Law Family Companies has visions of redevelopment of a number of these parcels. And several of the buildings are in old shape, need, in the need of a lot of work. These two applications tonight are really the first step in this process. We will be presenting a fairly simple plan of land. We're just making some modifications to some of the property lines, and we're consolidating two lots in order to prepare a single parcel for our second case tonight, which is a site plan at the corner of Airport Road, Amherst Street. A little bit about this part of Nashville, if you don't already know. The front part is owned GB General Business along Amherst Street, and then the back part of the land is owned Park Industrial, but it does contain with it the mixed-use overlay district. Direct abutters to what we're talking about tonight up on Amherst Street will be Chipotle Restaurant just, just west of us. You can see the PSNH facility, Eversource, I guess, to the west, the railroad tracks and the airports to the south, again Sharon Ave way over on the east side. We'll be focusing our discussion tonight, really right kind of in the western central part of these holdings. About seven lots will, will be, will be part of what we're proposing. If you've been out there, it's fairly flat land, sandy soils, public utilities are located throughout the region. Coal Rain Brook is located in the northeast corner, and it does flow in a kind of an easterly by south direction, eventually getting to the Nashua River. Next slide, please, Scott.
Sure.
So one of the cases before you tonight is a, a plan of land, I call it, because it includes consolidation, a lot line relocation, and subdivision. And really, it's for seven of the parcels located along Airport Road and Amherst Street. That part of the area in question tonight measures about fourteen point six acres. And there's a number of things happening with this plan. We're relocating lot lines between the Lita Lanes and the Global property, just to kind of simplify that. We are creating, moving some lot lines in the back along Airport Road to gain proper frontage, where one of those lots existed without frontage onto Airport Road. But most importantly, at the corner of Airport Road and Amherst Street, we are consolidating the parcels to create one parcel. And that's in the location of three buildings, the former Grand Buffet. There's a small dry cleaner there, and there was a non-for-profit business there for, for many years. Mr. Chairman, all these lots, the plan has been prepared in compliance with the subdivision regulations. There's really no impact to any public streets. We have asked for one waiver under this application, and that's for survey information for adjacent parcels within a thousand feet of the site. So any questions on the plan of land or the subdivision before I move to the site plan?
Not for me. Anybody else on the board?
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty, pretty rudimentary plan of land. Okay, Scott, next slide, please. So the proposed development, again, this is the newly created Lot four seventy-nine at the corner of Amherst Street and Airport Road, and it will be the one point nine acres in size. And as I just mentioned a minute ago, currently, there's three buildings on this site, is the Grand Buffet Restaurant that's been closed, a nonprofit business that's vacant, a small dry cleaner. In sum, those three buildings total about twenty thousand six hundred square feet. So what's being proposed is to demolish those three buildings and construct a one-story multi-tenanted retail building that measures fifteen thousand one hundred square feet in size. The new building is envisioned to contain a small restaurant on the west side. We've labeled that as Retail A. The thinking there is something, a small sandwich shop or a coffee shop with seasonal outdoor seating, forty seats total for that tenant space. In the middle of this building will be spaces for several retail tenants measuring about sixty-three hundred feet. And then the end cap on the west side of this, of this center is a restaurant, a two-hundred-seat restaurant measuring six thousand square feet in size. It will have outdoor patio seating that's represented on the plan. So a couple things to point out. Access will be from two curb cuts, one off of Airport Road and one off of Amherst Street. This should be seen as really a significant improvement for traffic access management. Currently, this property enjoys some really wide sections of pavement that morph right into Airport Road, and even Amherst Street's got some rather large, non-conventional curb cuts. So we think by cleaning up, it'll provide good access to the site. We are proposing to reconstruct the sidewalk along Amherst Street. It's, it's pretty worn. It's pretty beat up. So along the frontage of Amherst Street, we'll receive a brand-new sidewalk. Mr. Chairman, we are proposing to make a connection to the west. I want to point this out behind the Lita Lanes building. Again, we think that's just kind of a good planning measure. It allows, because Amherst Street is a divided way, it will allow the Global and the Lita Lanes patrons to actually work through our site to get to Airport Road if they want to go west at the signal. And over the years, I know the city has really asked us to encourage trying to connect, provide connectivity to retail sites along some of the major corridors. Parking, we do have parking. You can see here on four sides of the building. Parking's intended to have employees in the back and then visitors to the front and the sides. Your code requires a range of seventy-three to a hundred and fifty parking spaces. We're providing a hundred and four open space, ten percent's required in the zone. There's only five percent out there now. We're actually, when we're done, up at around nineteen percent. So we're adding a pretty good green space. Utilities, everything is underground to the new buildings. We've got a new pylon sign going in over on the Amherst Street curb cut. Landscaping is part of the plan set, we're proposing landscaping along Airport Road and in some of the end cap islands. Staff has asked us if we could look at adding a little bit of landscaping behind the building, and we've, we've agreed to do so. We've submitted lighting plans as part of the application, standard downcast lighting, cutoff luminaires, everything is LED, no spillage over to abutting properties. Stormwater, currently, everything right now, the site is fully paved. Everything runs right down to Coal Rain Brook untreated. We're gonna curb and capture our stormwater. Like I said, we're curbing and catch basins. We've got three subsurface storage elements underneath parking. What we've tried to do is add a qualitative measure and a quantitative measure to stormwater where none currently exist. Your code one ninety-one fifteen says, under redeveloped sites, you gotta try to improve drainage as, as best you can, subject to your approval, and I think we've, we've met that. We did include a small traffic study, the TIR report. And when you compare what was there and used in the past to what's there right now, the numbers are basically the same. We've got a little bit more cars on a total basis, less than the AM peak, and about nine more cars in the PM peak. So really, it's about the same. They had twenty thousand square feet there before. We've had a smaller size, fifteen thousand, but we expect to be a newer building, hopefully a successful restaurant. And so there was no warrant for any additional traffic. Scott, last slide is the architecture. I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you. Yep, so the proposed building, flat roof between eighteen and twenty-two feet in height, fixed glass windows, architectural metal and brick panels around the building, screened HVAC units on top. And so I think it's an attractive building. I think it's a lot nicer than what's out there now. That's just my opinion. We have requested two waivers as part of our application, again, the survey within a thousand feet. We're asking for some architectural waivers. The National Land Use Code, you know, has some fairly restrictive architectural standards. They call for pitch roofs. They call for a lot of different exterior materials and things. And so we're recommending a waiver to really build this facility that you see here with us. Construction's expected to start in the winter of twenty-four. It's about an eight-to-ten-month project to construct, so by next summer, hopefully, we'll be up and running. In summary, Mr. Chairman, we believe the application conforms to your requirements, both in terms of subdivision and the site plan. The conditions of approval, as outlined by staff, are acceptable to us and to our client, and we seek your approval. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions if I can. I may lean on Brian or, or Mr. Kane to, to help out. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Just quick, the, the restaurants being proposed, is no drive-throughs currently in the process?
No drive-throughs.
No drive-throughs.
That's my question. We try, though.
Yeah, okay. And you know, parts of the master plan did contemplate the potential kind of sort of boulevard nature along Amherst Street. It looks like the parking and the way the building's set, you know, might impact that first row of parking if that ever was developed someday. But do you think there's enough parking in the rest of the site to accommodate that?
Yeah. So I'm glad you brought that up. We, you know, this was our second app, our second submitted plan. Our, our first submitted plan, if you go back to the site plan, please, Scott. We actually had the building set back further and had two, two rows of parking in the front of the building. And it was called to our attention about the language in the master plan and the vision. Frankly, we, we wouldn't have built the project if we had to put the building right up because just that whole feel and nature of Amherst Street, people want to see a parking space. They want to park in the front door. Our client did agree to eliminate one of the bays in the front and, and move that building sixty-four feet forward, and that was well received by staff. And so we, we've kind of feel like we've got the, the compromise plan here in front of you this evening.
Okay, thanks. Yeah. Other questions by the board?
I guess I just, yeah, just sort of a follow-on question to that, and maybe more for staff. I mean, understanding that there's, you know, that the vision of the master plan is longer term and, you know, is not something that's gonna happen overnight and, and not with sort of individual projects. Obviously, there's, there's sort of an incremental nature to it. I mean, do we feel like with, you know, the design of this site in this way, you know, with that degree of parking in the front of the building, is that ultimately, do we think consistent with where we would be trending towards in terms of trying to get to where the master plan would like to be?
Yeah. So we, we did meet with the applicant, and we highly suggested that they, that they move it forward. And they have come back with this plan, and they, they really have pushed it forward. I think we're gonna see changes incrementally over time and just getting the buildings closer to Amherst Street. Of course, it's gonna be a long process. But right now, you know, we don't have an ordinance which requires it, but it is, you know, in the master plan, and it is what we are going to be looking at and suggesting with any applicant that comes in, that they push the building forward as much as possible.
I believe Sam Durfee raised his hand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions by the board for the applicant?
I, I did have one.
Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Around the Amherst, parking on the Amherst side, there's the buffer between the parking lot and the street. If I'm the Land Use Code, there was a need to have some sort of buffer between the, the two. I think that's like one ninety dash one eighty-four staff. I don't know if that's correct to assume, but some sort of buffer too. I don't know. To be consistent with the master plan, beautify the street a little bit. That's not the right terms, but is that something you could?
Yeah. I mean, the applicant can certainly speak to it, but they are going to be providing some new landscaping up front. And I know they're also gonna be working on the sidewalk up front.
But the entire strip between the two islands and meetings, that's, that's more than I'm, I'm referring to, I guess.
So if I may, you're correct, one eighty-four, but one eighty-four D speaks to a ten-foot, a ten-space rule for interior islands, interior parking bays. And here where we're, our exterior is touching a green belt, it's only applied like a, a, a Demula supermarket parking lot is the interior parking. So my testimony, sir, is we comply with one eighty-four D. Just to build on what Linda said, you know, right now, you've got a sea of asphalt, so we consider it a much improved front door. And you're, you've got a keen eye. You cannot park in the front yard setback. And so we're set back that ten feet. So we're enhancing the sidewalk. We're respecting that ten foot. We do have plant materials there. Of course, it's always a balance on a retail site. If you tree it so much, then people can't see the businesses. So we've tried to find that balance, but it, it's compliant to one eighty, one eighty-four, yes.
And just.
Mr. Varley?
Yeah, just for your, for better fitness degree, that, so, because that does, that issue does come up not infrequently. And where it does apply, the applicant would need to seek a waiver if they weren't going to meet the standard.
Thank you for the, for the presentation.
Okay. Any other questions by the board for the applicant?
Thank you.
Thanks, hearing none. At this point, I'll open up to the audience. Is anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the plan? Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the plan?
Yes.
Okay. I'll give the board one more opportunity to ask any questions of the applicant or staff while we're in the hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Can I just ask that, if you decide to approve the plan, for the site plan, that you add a condition of approval, of approval, that the applicant has agreed to work with staff to enhance the landscaping in the rear of the building?
Okay. All right. Any other questions by the board for staff or the applicant? No? I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing then, move to the meeting. All right, so we've got both the subdivision and a site plan. Just in terms of process, obviously, we have to take the subdivision first. Any discussion by the board here on the subdivision itself? Do you have any comments, things they want to talk about? Okay. How about for the site plan? Alderman Cle?
It's actually just more of a comment. The truth is that this area's been a nice hole for quite a long time, since Restore left, which was just right around the COVID. And the restaurant there has been gone forever. And there have been even some different changes of what, what that was, too. So I mean, I hope that this will become more successful as a restaurant. I used to live at Canongate, so I lived right across the street from this. So I, I knew what, what that area was, and then the dry cleaner and so on. I, I'm just glad to see something going in there. And you had asked my question about the drive-thru. That would have been my only concern. So I, I think this is a, a good plan, and it'll be nice to see something decent there. So, thank you.
Any other comments or, on the board? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion? We'll start with the subdivision plan. Mr. Varley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would make a motion to approve new business eight twenty-three dash zero one seven six lot line relocation plan. And that would be with the finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in NRO section one ninety dash one thirty-eight G, with a total of five stipulations to that approval. Stipulation number one being a waiver request from section one ninety dash two eighty-two B nine to show physical features within within 1,000 feet. That waiver request will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And then stipulations two through five to read as written in the staff report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Riley. So we have that motion to approve this subdivision case number A23-0176 with the stipulations as stated by Mr. Riley. Do we have a second on it?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. That motion passes. Okay. How about on the site plan? Mr. Riley?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve as well with respect to new business A23-0175 Site Plan. Again, with the finding that the site plan does meet the requirements of NRO Section 190-146D with a total of 10 stipulations. The first two being waiver requests. Number one being a waiver of Section 190-279EE requiring showing of existing conditions. That will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number two being a waiver request from NRO Section 190-172 regarding building design standards. And that, again, will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulations three through nine to read as written in the staff report. And then an additional new stipulation, number 10, will read that the applicant will work with staff to improve the landscaping in the rear of the site.
Okay, thank you. So we have that motion by Mr. Riley to approve this site plan. Again, case number A23-0175 with this, again, the stipulations as stated by Mr. Riley. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. That motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Okay, so moving on with our agenda. Next up, we have new business conditional special use permit. This is case number A23-0185. This is TUF, Tough Realty LLC owner. So proposed conditional use permit to allow a smoke shop within 1,000 feet from light classified uses. This property is located at 282 Daniel Webster Highway. So for the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at this application and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction over a new business case A23-0185, property located at 282 Daniel Webster Highway.
All right, so we have that motion to take jurisdiction of A23-0185. Do we have a second on the jurisdiction? Mr. Riley? Any further discussion by the board on the jurisdiction? All those in favor taking jurisdiction?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Then that motion passes, we have jurisdiction. So, sure, go ahead and introduce yourself and present your case.
Good evening. My name's Israel Piedra. I'm an attorney at Waltz, White &amp; Fontaine here in Nashua on Factory Street. I represent the applicant in this matter involving 282 Daniel Webster Highway. The applicant and his cousins are members of TUF Realty, the owner of the property, and they're also the owners of the proposed business, which is called Tobacco Barn Two. And the applicant and the owners and their supporters are here tonight behind me in that section there. We're coming to the board tonight to request a conditional use permit to allow a smoke shop to operate on the property. As the board is, I'm sure, aware, last year, the ordinance was amended to allow smoke shops in Nashua by conditional use permit only. And the ordinance also imposes an additional 1,000-foot buffer requirement on all smoke shops that has two parts. One, that smoke shop should not be within 1,000 feet of schools or youth-serving organizations. And second, that they should not be within 1,000 feet of other smoke shops. Importantly, the ordinance specifically allows applicants to request a waiver from that buffer restriction when certain requirements are met, which we believe is the case here tonight, and that's what we're asking for from the board. And specifically, the waiver that we're asking for is from the 1,000-foot from other like-smoke shop requirements, not from the educational institutions, because there are none within the buffer or, in fact, anywhere nearby. I'll start with some background about the business. The proposed business will be called Tobacco Barn Two. It's located on the DW Highway, as you can see on the board. It's across the street from Bob's Discount Furniture and Chili's. It's next to a U-Haul facility and a Sleep Number franchise. It's obviously on the DW Highway on a six-lane portion of that, one of the busiest areas of the city from a commercials perspective. My clients already own and operate a store called Tobacco Barn, which is located on Spitbrook Road, somewhat nearby, above Two Guys Smoke Shop, if you're familiar with that. It's on the second floor. They lease that space and obviously own this property where they proposed to start a second location. They do intend to continue operating the first location if this location is approved. As you can tell from the name, the primary focus of the enterprise is selling tobacco products. That's mostly cigarettes, also cigars and vapes. But importantly, this is not a vape-focused business at all. In fact, the vape-related sales account for only about 10% of the total revenue of the current location. The vast majority of sales are cigarettes, and the new location is intended to focus more on cigars. Because of its location above Two Guys Smoke Shop, cigar vendors are not often willing to work with my clients in their current location, and so they're interested in expanding their cigar retail business at the proposed location. But again, vapes will not be a focus of this facility at all, which I hope will help allay some of the concerns. Couple things of background. When my clients opened their current Tobacco Barn business in 2020, smoke shops were allowed as of right in this zone, which is the highway business zone. And my client started discussions with the previous owner of this property a couple years ago, and again, smoke shops were allowed as of right. And so that's just the background here. My clients did purchase this property in July of this year after the ordinance had gone into effect. And certainly, their lack of understanding about that change is no excuse, and it's not a basis for what we're asking for. But I think that it is a understandable reason why they didn't realize that that was the case, having just opened their own tobacco store a couple years earlier in the same general location in the same zone. They have invested substantial time and money in this enterprise. I think it's important to note that this is a local, family-owned business. All three owners are family members, cousins and brothers. All three of them live in Nashua. They've lived in Nashua for decades. One lives in Ward Eight, two live in Ward Five. Their kids are in the schools here. They're members of the community. They've been small business owners in Nashua for about 20 years now. And they've essentially invested their life savings in this new business enterprise. These are folks that are going to be on the property all the time. This is not an absentee landlord situation or out-of-state enterprise. These are local community members that are going to be there. I visited their current location. I found it clean, I found it respectable. They have a completely clean record with the state authorities, tobacco enforcement. And I believe that the same will be true at their new location. So with that background, the first, there's kind of two items here. There's the CUP criteria themselves, and then there's a waiver criteria that is specific to the buffer. At this point, Mr. Chair, I guess I'll ask if you'd like me to go through all nine of the CUP criteria, or if the information in my written submission is sufficient?
Unless anybody from the board wants to hear the nine criteria, if you've already read it? Okay, I think we're good with that. I think we do want to understand more about the buffer.
Sure, yeah, and I do believe that the CUP is, the CUP criteria are pretty easily satisfied in this situation, and I don't think that that should be overlooked, because as the board knows, if something is allowed by conditional use permit, it means it's allowed, subject to certain requirements being met, which I believe that we easily meet for the reasons stated in my letter. Now, the only question is the buffer requirement, and is the buffer necessary to serve the goals of that 1,000-foot buffer ordinance? So the ordinance does allow the board to specifically waive compliance with the requirement if certain criteria are met. The first criteria is that strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. And as always with an unnecessary hardship analysis, we should start with the principle that a landowner has a right, constitutional right, to reasonable use of their property. An unjustified or unsubstantiated restriction on that right is a hardship. The case law says that a hardship exists when no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purpose of the zoning ordinance and the specific restriction on the property. So again, the key inquiry here is, does enforcing the 1,000-foot buffer in this situation really serve the goal of the buffer requirement? And we'd submit no. Again, as the board is aware, most likely, for those of you who have been on the board for some time, this came into existence just last year after some controversy. Por Pierre's Restaurant that was proposed, it was right next to or down the street from two schools. The back of the vape shop was literally a few yards from a child's playground, a school playground, and that caused some consternation, understandably. And as a result, there was this ordinance amendment that came into effect to create a buffer against that kind of possibility. And during the drafting process, the drafters of that amendment were also concerned about a situation where there was too many smoke shops in a particular occasion, and it was described as trying to prevent an auto mile of vape shops, which is, of course, a very legitimate thing to not want in Nashua. A couple things to draw from that, I think. I think the board will agree that the focus of that opposition or that concern was vape shops specifically, not necessarily smoke shops altogether. They're in vogue. We know that they can appeal to children or young persons, that they can have kind of a unflattering or unappealing appearance from the street. And so I think that a lot of the concern about that particular proposal and other potential proposals was vape shops specifically. And second, that the main intent of that amendment and that ordinance was the school issue. And I'd submit that the over-concentration of other smoke shops was kind of a secondary goal, certainly important, but a secondary goal. And in this case, it's important because we're not talking about a vape shop. This is a smoke shop that sells vapes. A very small percentage of their sales are vapes. And again, in fact, the owners intend to focus on cigars that are probably going to attract an older clientele more than anything else. More importantly, there are no schools anywhere nearby. So that prime reason that this ordinance came into effect is not present here. This is a busy commercial zone. There's no educational institutions in the area. Also importantly, this proposal is not going to result in an over-concentration of this use. Although there are a few smoke shops in the vicinity, which is why we need this waiver here, the overall density is extremely low because of the extremely high density of this area. It's the most dense commercial area of the city. There's literally hundreds of businesses within shouting distance of this location, strip malls, big box stores, bars, restaurants. The other smoke shops, which are within 1,000 feet, are not really even visible from this property. They're tucked into strip malls, they're tucked into shopping centers. Most people coming through the area wouldn't even realize that there are multiple smoke shops in the area. So there should be, in my opinion, no concern about creating an auto mile of vape shops or anything to that effect by approving this proposal. So we do believe that, as far as this first criteria goes, that it would be unnecessary to enforce the 1,000-foot buffer restriction to serve the purposes for which it was enacted. So the second criteria is that the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. And this is obviously related to that first element. The spirit and intent of the ordinance is served in this situation because it allows my clients to make reasonable use of their property without any negative impacts to others. It's not going to endanger any of the goals the buffer requirement was intended to protect. And realistically, I'd say that this is about the least objectionable place a smoke shop could be. If we could look at a couple of the other slides here, just to give a little bit more context about the location. You know, this is from Google Maps. The mall is to the south. You have Costco to the southwest. Again, Bob's and Chili's across the street. Behind is a shopping mall. U-Haul is next door. It's essentially surrounded by parking lots and strip malls and big box stores. Frankly, smoke shops are permitted still in the city by conditional use permit, and I can't think of the least objectionable place that one could be. So we do believe the waiver can be granted without violating the intent of this ordinance. So the other thing I'll point out, just if we can go to the next slide here. Yeah, that's perfect, the next one, if you don't mind. This is the previous business that was at this location. This is from 2019. It's Nashville Tile Center. As you can see, this has been a retail location for a long time, so that kind of overarching use is not changing here. But my client has already cleaned up this pretty unappealing curbside view. There's no longer supplies outside, there's no longer machinery outside. This is going to be an attractive retail location that's clean and respectable, and I think it will be an improvement from the prior owner and the prior establishment on the site. So again, smoke shops are a permitted use. It's just by CUP. In order to enforce the waiver requirement, there has to be good reason to do so, has to be serving the intent of that buffer requirement, which I don't think is happening here. Lastly, I'll say the conditions in the staff report are acceptable to my client, and I do think that we meet the requirements for the CUP and a waiver, and so we respectfully ask the board to approve the application. Happy to take any questions.
All right, thanks. And do you know what are the distances?
So I don't know the exact distances. I think there are three or four other smoke shops within 1,000 feet. It's probably 400 to 500 feet in between the closest ones. Again, they're kind of across the street and down and hidden in a strip mall, so you can't even, there's no real sightlines, especially because of the way that corridor is configured. There's so many, so much buildup around there. There are certainly several within, or a couple at least, within 500 feet, I would say. But again, our position would be the density and the number of businesses in between them means that's kind of misleading.
Okay, thanks. Can you describe, I mean, this is just a conditional use permit, so there's really, we don't have any site plan here. Is there any intent for modification of the outside of the building?
So not immediately. As of now, that's kind of as it looks currently. There has been more lighting installed just to make it more safer and more precautionary for nighttime use. When it opens, the footprint will not be changing. Eventually, my clients have discussed building a new building for this business. But that isn't at the point where that's going to happen anytime, immediately or soon.
Other questions by the board? Alderman Klee?
Thank you. First, just to clarify, you said that when they did purchase this property in July 2023, your claim is that they were unaware of this ordinance? your claim is that they were unaware of this ordinance when they purchased it.
Correct, yeah, and so they certainly were unaware. And again, I think that there is a good reason that they were unaware, considering their history of opening a smoke shop two, three years prior and not having to need any permits. That's not an excuse. It's, I certainly understand and have told my clients that that's not a reason why they should get this waiver. But I think I can tell the board that, having discussed with my clients, they certainly proceeded in good faith, they proceeded with due diligence, and their mistake was understandable. Unfortunately, it was a mistake that hinged on them spending essentially their life savings to buy this property. And so I add that just to give some context to the board. I'm not arguing that it's a reason to grant the waiver, but I think the board should know that from an equitable perspective.
Go ahead, Alderman Cleese.
Thank you. I know you referred to the ordinance has been put through and the comment about auto mile. I mean, when I'm looking at the map, I do see quite a cluster right within that area of 295 Daniel Webster, 293 Daniel Webster, 15 Spit Brook. And then even over by the Home Depot Tobacco Outlet and so on. I can tell you firsthand that when the ordinance was put through, it wasn't just because of vaping. There was a primary, because of that school, you're right, Port Pierre is being, abutting the daycare where the children were playing. But there was as much concern about tobacco wafting over as it was for, and cigar was actually one of the comments that had been done that. So just to clarify that it wasn't just for vaping and so on. And soon after that had passed, we did give a waiver to someone who was in the midst of it and had not been told on that. This is not the case, and this cases had been that. So the fact that that particular case had come through, I understand that they did not know about this, but it was of something that kind of came. And I don't know if you all talked through your, you know, and so on, but.
Yeah, and I'm aware of that case, and I agree, it's a different situation. I don't, I think in that situation, there was a legitimate legal argument that the city made a mistake and
Yes.
those applicants relied on that mistake, and they were deserved of a waiver in that situation. Again, I'm not arguing that. But I think it's important for the city to know the context. I also should say, you know, I appreciate the comments. I, and I appreciate that there are other smoke shop-related businesses in the area. I disagree that it's anything close to a high concentration of them. Just because of the density of commercial businesses in the area, literally dozens of businesses within the 1,000-square-foot buffer, I don't realistically think that you can say that someone driving through that area is going to notice that there's a concentration of smoke shops. You may disagree, I really don't believe that, and I don't believe that that was the intent of this ordinance, or that would be a valid goal of this ordinance to enforce it in this situation.
Thank you.
Mr. Riley?
Thank you, just to follow up on one of the points Alderman Cleese raised. So just to be clear, there was not a circumstance here, because the, your letter does reference renovations having been made. The applicant didn't seek a building permit or go through some other formal process with the city that they were relying on? Any renovations that were done were pre-building permit or without?
Correct, from a legal perspective, there's no, there's nothing there that would entitle my client to a permit. I just think from a human factors perspective, they went to the city when they opened their current shop three years ago, and they didn't need anything, so I think it's very understandable that they didn't believe that they needed something three years later, that obviously was wrong. It is what it is, but correct.
And, you know, another issue that I think that Alderman Cleese alluded to, and I don't think we discussed this, this facility, is there, would there be onsite smoke, you know, like a smoking lounge, or this is purely sales?
Just sales.
Other questions by the board?
Sorry, one of the things, just in mind. Among the facilities or the other retail establishments that are within 1,000 feet, is there existing retail location, one of them, that's within 1,000 feet?
No.
Thank you.
Other questions by the board for the applicant?
Okay. Thank you.
All right, at this point, I will open it up to the audience. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan or have a question in the plan? Just go ahead and come forward. Come on up. Make sure you state your name and address for the record, please, thanks.
Hey, doing members of the board. Chairman, my name's Wayne Keller. I am the contractor for Umar Mohammed and Tobacco Born Family. I'm from Dunstable, Mass. That's Aggressive Power Washington Property Management is my company. So I just want to speak a little bit about the hardship that this puts on them, because I've worked hand-in-hand over the past few months with them, and the countless hours that they spent away from their family, that I've spent away from my family, the money that they spent and put into this. I mean, to not let this open would be, you know, devastating, the way savings went into this here. And I just want to let you guys know the kind of character that they are. I mean, when you go in their shop, you have a sense of family. You know, they're friendly, they bring in people from all outside of Nashua. They bring them into the city, which is a great value to, you know, to our place. And, yeah, I just want to, you know, I just want to give you guys a sense of kind of what kind of business they are and what they're trying to do. Any questions?
Nope, appreciate your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Either opposition, concerned, or questions, or in favor, it's okay with me. Anybody on Zoom?
I don't see.
No, okay. All right. At this point, then, I will look back to the board. Does anybody from the board have any questions for the applicant or staff while we're in the hearing? Hearing done, I will go ahead and close the hearing and move to the meeting. All right, so we have an application in front of us, obviously, conditional use permit is a newer, newer, in newest ordinance. I think it was passed in 2022, maybe around April or so, something like that. We've had this come up a couple of times. Yeah, I think Mr. Riley or somebody else discussed the previous cases we've had. We've had some issues with building permits being issued and people getting partway into construction and then finding out about the ordinance. But that was right around April of '22, so it was within a few weeks, I think, actually. So this is probably the first case I'm remembering. I'm sort of beyond that timeframe. So I'm interested to hear what comments are. Alderman Cleese?
Thank you. Yes, that particular case, while I had some concerns because it was so close to so many schools, there was no doubt about it. They would have pushed, necessarily pushed their paperwork and so on up faster if they knew this was coming down and they didn't get the heads up. So I understand the passage of that one. In this particular case, I understand the hardship, I understand the amount of monies that have been put forward, but we do have ordinances and and while, yes, I do also respect the fact that, just a few years before, that they had opened up, things change, and we can't grandfather somebody in just because things changed and they weren't aware of it. I respect the hardship. I don't know if they can then turn around and sell this particular property, but no, nothing has been done with the city as far as it's concerned. I cannot support this. It goes against what the ordinance is, and this is not the only type of ordinance that we have through that says, within so many feet. We have the same thing for gas stations and so on. So I think we put an ordinance through. The intent was not just for vaping. I respect the fact that there's only 10% vaping here, and I respect the comments that were made in that, you know, it's not to entice children or anything else like that. But we did put the ordinance through. I was there every step of the way, I know what the intent was. I know what the first precipice of it was, which was Port Pierre's. But as it went on, it was to kind of slow the roll, not to create as much auto mile, whatever you want to call this. There is a small cluster there, if you go up, not too much further, into the downtown area, we have a number of them there, too. So I do have concerns, I cannot support this. I have, I truly understand the hardship, I understand the money that's put forward. I'm sorry that that has happened, but I can't, I can't support it, thank you.
Alderman Riley?
Excuse me.
Mr. Riley, you just made me an all-.
You got devoted, all right.
I'm just throwing the names out, man.
So, I mean, I guess just as a, sort of as a starting place, Alderman Cleese, I appreciate your position, particularly as someone who was, you know, integral in terms of, you know, bringing this ordinance up and getting it passed. I mean, I will say that the ordinance also does explicitly vest this board with the authority to waive that requirement. So clearly, the alderman saw a fit to to allow for exceptions in appropriate circumstances, and so it seems to me that the question only for this board, as with other waivers we consider, is whether there's, you know, an undue hardship here. And, you know, interestingly, we've had a relatively recent experience where this board was put in a position of actually considering a variance request, which is pretty, well, it's the first time in my time as a board that it happened. And I would say, even though, I think technically, we would apply largely the same analysis to our waiver requests, we have not historically employed the same rigor, let's say, in terms of evaluating waivers in the context of, say, you know, subdivision and site plans. So I do think, you know, that the board has discretion to look at these circumstances and, you know, assess whether, even independent of, you know, the applicant having, you know, legal knowledge of the requirement and even with, there haven't been more time passed, you know, since the adoption of the ordinance as compared to that, you know, that other case we reviewed. You know, we do still have the discretion and the ability to assess the particular circumstances and decide whether they want, you know, an exception. You know, in my view, this is, this case is a close call. But I do think that, you know, the applicant has raised some, you know, valid points, in particular, it seems to me in terms of, you know, the location of this particular property relative to the intent of the ordinance around, you know, clustering, where, you know, this is a, you know, a sort of purely retail, you know, sector of the city. You know, this is not a situation where you've got retail interspersed with, you know, residential or other uses. Where, you know, I would be personally more, you know, I would say be more concerned and more worried about the sort of application of the purpose of the ordinance. You know, in this case, you know, it is highly concentrated, you know, retail uses. And as the applicant noted, you know, you could have, you know, dozens of businesses within, you know, 1,000 feet, if not more than that. And, you know, based on some very imprecise, you know, measuring I've been doing on Google Maps, you know, we've got, looks like one outlet that's a little over 500 feet. As best I can tell, the other outlets that are within 1,000 feet are, you know, 6, 7, 800 feet, you know, distant from this location. So, I mean, it seems to me that it's a pretty close, pretty close call. But I would, at least at the moment, probably lean towards, in this particular case, you know, considering, you know, granting the waiver request. But I think, at the same time, with the understanding that maybe, you know, the city needs to think about more affirmatively or, you know, I guess, better communicating the standard to prospective applicants and purchasers of property to make sure that, you know, we don't have this recurring again. And I think I would be less inclined to be, you know, in favor of granting a waiver the further we get from, you know, the adoption of the ordinance.
Alderman Cleese?
Thank you. I think that's a burden to put on the city, to ask the city to know when someone is buying a piece of property, what their intent is of it. I'm sure, if they came in with the application, that would have been different. So I do respect your commentary and so on, and I can tell you that when we did work on this particular ordinance, we did give this board that leeway, because we did not want to tie your hands. The alderman did not want to to say to the planning department, we're going to, you know, say absolutely positively not. We wanted you to have the discretion. So I respect the fact that if this is something that you do want to do, you are within your right to do it. The only one that you were not within your right was to give a variance to the 1,000 of a school. That one, we kind of held your feet to the fire on that one, but you're right, you do have the discretion, we have the discretion here to be able to do that. I still hold to the fact that even though you may not be able to see them from the street, they are within that, that distance. I don't know how the city truly would be able to monitor every single purchase of retail to do that. It would be one thing if they came in with a plan, but.
Yeah, just to be clear, that, to the extent that that's what it sounded like I was suggesting, that's not, I didn't mean to suggest that the city should be, you know, attempting to intervene when people are purchasing property to advise them. All I'm saying is, it doesn't seem like this is, you know, as common knowledge as it should be for prospective, you know, purchasers of property who might be considering, you know, engaging this type of business. So to the extent that there's an opportunity to better publicize the existence of this, you know, limitation, you know, I think it would be good to take that opportunity. You know, the only other thing I guess I would say is, you know, further to the, you know, point about the clustering businesses in this particular section of the city, it seems to me that if, you know, if we want to tolerate a concentration of tobacco businesses anywhere, it seems to me this would be the best section of the city for it, because it is, you know, so heavily retail and so concentrated, and so, you know, sort of densely populated in terms of businesses. So, I mean, again, it doesn't, in and of itself, you know, I think, dictate that we grant a waiver, but I do think it's a relevant factor.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just add a couple other thoughts I have. And again, I'm not, I'm not sort of swayed either way yet, but, you know, one of the things that does tend to come into play with these adjacencies and clusters is sort of the the abutters. And, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't say, we don't have any abutters here talking about this, and we've had several smoke shop, vape shop applications, and we've had a large number of people, public abutters, non-abutters, everybody here. It's a little, you know, take it for what you want, but it is a little different, we don't have anybody here commenting about this from the public. And this is like probably the first time I've ever had a, I've probably seen 10 of these in this board. And there's, this is the only one that I have never had a crowd halfway out the door. So I don't know if that, take that as you will, but it doesn't appear there's a strong abutter concern here. Because they generally do not hesitate, we don't, as far as I know, we don't even have a letter from any abutters or anything. So I think that issue of whether the businesses and people around this particular site So I think that issue of whether the businesses and people around this particular site have a concern, we don't have evidence that that's an issue. We have had a lot of evidence of that in nearly every other instance that I've seen here. That's just one more piece of this puzzle, and I think this is a puzzle, you know, that I'll throw in there. But I do think this is challenged as well by the fact that there is, this is a little bit of an odd condition where there is a move into an existing building with no site plan and no building permit. Because both of those processes would flag the issue, particularly the site plan, obviously. So that's a challenge as well. You know, I almost think, you know, because the site plans, you know, people get educated, and they tend to do the site plan work before they buy, right? And the conditional use permit, it's, I don't know, that happens before people buy, too, a lot of times. But, so I'm a little bit torn on this one, but I'm a little swayed by the fact that I don't have a line of people here saying they don't want this. Because I've, my experience is, I've had that. So, Alderman Cleese?
Again, thank you. I agree. The buffers that are always of concern are residents that have to live by this. And obviously, there are no residents that are abutting this, it would just be other businesses and so on. But my concern is that we do have this ordinance, excuse me, and we, this is the very first true time that we've had to kind of hold our own feet to the fire or something of this nature. The biggest hardship that has been put forward is that they've put out their life savings. And again, while I am truly sympathetic to something like this, due diligence wasn't done, no site plan, no any of that is concerned. And I have to look at, I have to look at that. The other comment is that while this may be a cluster, it's not a visible cluster. It's not something that anybody can see. So I can't disagree with that when I look at it. There is still some clusters that you can, you can see, I mean, 295, 293, Daniel Webster Highway, 15 Spitbrook, they're really kind of very close that you would see those. The tobacco outlet that's more probably over towards where Home Depot is, you don't see that one quite as much. But you still do see these. I still feel compelled to uphold the ordinance while this board is given the ability for this particular situation where there's not a school. I would respect whatever the board does, but I still cannot put this through. I believe that there's, they should have done a little bit more work and not just assumed that nothing has changed in the year since, so.
Mr. Hirsch?
So, am I correct in assuming that until a building permit was applied for, this issue didn't come to, come up?
They haven't applied.
They haven't applied yet? So.
As far as I think the applicant.
I'm a little confused about how the whole thing.
Sorry, we're in the meetings, I can't, but I do remember you saying there wasn't a building permit at this point. There wasn't work done that required that at this point.
Okay, I thought there was a lot of work done internally, the contractor indicated.
Yeah, I mean, I asked that question specifically in terms of the building permit, and the response was, "No, there was not, they had not reached the stage," or "There wasn't, the work being done didn't necessitate a building permit."
Right. Ms. Hudson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good discussion. I feel, I feel concerned for the applicant and the hardship and that's the thing, but that, to me, that's, you know, buyer beware sort of thing, you know, do your due diligence and know the rules and things like that. So I can't, I can't count on that as a means to make a decision here. But I do, when I do go through the nine criteria as outlined, and the responses, looking through them, the only one that I could find that, you know, that we would lean on to, uses as a basis to deny this, would be, you know, that it will not materially endanger the public health. And that would just be based upon, you don't think this use should be, you know, in itself is a danger to the public health. But there are other uses of this type around that are in business, and so I don't find that compelling. If we, the ordinance doesn't speak to clustering or anything like that, it speaks to a distance. So maybe for clarifications needed, ordinances or whatnot about clustering of the uses, it just speaks to the offset from the other like uses. This obviously is within an offset from other like uses. So if we wouldn't, if we wouldn't approve this one here, I don't know where we would approve it. As was said, you know, I don't know where we would grant a conditional use for this use within 1,000 feet of another use. If not here, where, I guess would be my question. So, given the fact that there are no residential abutters or business uses, you know, the corridor it is, and all the things that previous speakers have spoken to. So, given all that, I'm inclined to be in favor of this, even though I'm generally not in favor of the use, but it being a use that's allowed by conditional permit and finding the criteria for that met, I'm inclined to support it.
Mr. Bollinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd be inclined to align myself with Mr. Hudson's thinking. My understanding of the CUP process, there's not a true hardship criteria. They're not coming necessarily zoning or really for something like that. It's whether or not you meet the nine specified criteria within the conditional use permit application. That said, I've driven that corridor, I've lived here a very long time. I had no idea those other uses were even there. They're very innocuous, they're offset from the road. Anecdotally, I've driven through a number of other retail centers within the state and others, and you do see tobacco, 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 vape, like literally just shotgun right next to each other along a major retail corridor, quite visible from the street. That said, I would agree with Mr. Hudson. If you were not to grant the CUP here, I'm not sure where else you would. I was currently honestly more surprised to see that the site in this part of the city was on septic and not on the public water system. There was, there was some correspondence about that. That said, my opinion has nothing to do with liking the use or not liking the use. I would be inclined to believe they meet the CUP criteria, and if we ever got to a point where there were too many of these, I guess I'd be willing to let the market decide. People don't want to go, they won't go, and people would be less inclined to try to put this use forth. So that's my opinion on the matter, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did just want to clarify one technical point, because I think, I make sure we're aligned in, particularly in terms of, you know, if we were, whether we were to approve or deny the waiver. Because I agree, and I think the applicant stated as much, that they felt like they met the nine CUP criteria without really much question. But the 1,000-foot limitation is applied sort of on top of the CUP criteria with then the authority of the planning board to waive that 1,000-foot limitation under 190, 148D, which is our standard approval criteria for waivers for any, you know, so whether it's site plan subdivision, so like the waivers we just granted in the prior case we heard are granted under that section, 190-148D, which says it's two criteria, strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation, so that, those magic words we read every time we grant a waiver. I've always interpreted that to be, to your point, Mr. Bollinger, a lesser hurdle than a traditional variance request. And that's historically for the, well, we're talking about, you know, 11 years or whatever long Scott and I've been on the board. You know, that is, that is the way we've applied, that is being a lesser standard. And so, you know, looking at that standard, you know, again, I would be inclined to say strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship, and, you know, for the reasons the applicant stated, that it's, you know, granting this would not be contrary to the spirit for the same reasons that you and Mr. Hudson just, you know, outlined as well. And again, when I, when I look at this as, you know, strict conformity, again, you know, based on an unscientific review of the distances, you know, one location within 500 feet, you know, a few others within several hundred feet further, in a densely, you know, retail populated area, the most densely populated retail area in the city, I view that as a very sort of strict reading of it. And I do think, under the particular circumstances, you know, the applicant, in my view, has made a reasonably good case that there's, that that would be an unnecessary hardship here. So, but again, I just wanted to make sure that when we're taking final action, that we do it under that standard.
Alderman Cleese?
Thank you. I guess I have a question, probably for staff and so on. My concern here is that, again, one of the arguments is the hardship, purchased the property, life savings, et cetera, and I am not minimizing that under any circumstances because I can't imagine being under that particular thing. In the future, if someone purchases property and then comes to us with a hardship and said, "Well, you granted it there," are we going to be obliged to grant to the next one?
I think you have to look at each situation individually and why. In this case, there are reasons that they opened another smoke shop three years ago, they didn't realize that the rules had changed. Certainly, you know, you can understand that, but I think you're going to have to look at each one individually. I mean, yeah, they could try to say, "Well, you granted it in this situation, so you should grant it in this one." But I think like the situation on Canal Street, that was also very unique. So I think you'll have to look at each one and also the area in which it is. No, but we have not had any abutters call about this one as well. We haven't had the concerns that we had over on Canal Street. But I do think that each time, if we get another one of these, we'll have to look at each one and the unique circumstances and why they're here.
May I follow up?
Yep, go ahead.
So, again, I guess I have to reiterate the fact that someone can just say, "You approved it in this circumstances, you should approve it in our circumstances." And I agree with that, each one has to do. I also agree with the, respectfully, that it's a different circumstances. Canal is a completely different circumstances. There was a mistake done within the city and not, and not their fault. This one is not within the city, this is more on them. My concern is that this can be a future argument to someone coming through and saying, "Someone on Main Street, well, I bought the property, I didn't know. I have one, you know, down in Daniel Webster, I have one here, I opened it six years ago." These are my concerns, that I feel like we're running down a slippery slope of any ordinance that we put through and say, "You cannot, all someone has to say is, 'I didn't know it existed.'" So I'm just putting that out there. I'm very respectful of all the arguments that have been made here. I think they're very valuable, and I, I'm still not going to be swayed, but maybe the lone no. But it is what it is, so thank you.
Mr. Bollinger?
Just my final thought, Mr. Chair. I think we've all sort of intimated it, but I don't think anyone has said it. If the alderman want to pass an ordinance, this is, there shall not be less than 1,000 feet between smoke shops, that's, but that's not what we're talking about here. So as long as the ordinance is written as it is written, we're going to have to take these individually. We can't preclude someone from making a CUP application, whether it was an error on their part, whether it was an administrative error, whether it was happenstance. So that's not to lay fault at Board of Aldermen or anyone else, but if they wanted to button up that ordinance, I understand the distance to the school facility, obviously, but that distance to other competing opportunities, it's, I think, as written, it's going to be left up to interpretation by the board. So I, I'm not sure I have anything else to add on that. But as presented and as, as the ordinance is currently written, this board has the discretion to make that determination.
Yeah, I would, I'll get to you, Mr. Hudson, real quick. The one thing I was thinking in the back of my head, too, was whenever we get into these kind of close call things, I do try to, in my head, think back to, okay, this is a land use board, and is this particular use of the piece of land, you know, does it, is it consistent with the surroundings? Is it, you know, is it a good or a bad use of the land? You know, you can get pretty, pretty black and white on that, you know. That's one thing that I always try to think back on, is I try not to think about the, sort of the political nature of the situation, the people, the dollars, any of that stuff, to say, "All right, this is a retail shop that sells a product, whatever the product is, you know, is this piece of land, you know, an appropriate site for a retail shop selling some sort of product?" I mean, it's easy to get wrapped on what the product is, but people can like whatever, baseball shop versus a hockey shop, right? I mean, you can, you can be against whatever things are. I try to push a little bit of that aside, but I do think that's a, it's good for the aldermen to make some of those judgments, because that's a very specific place where that's kind of stuff should be talked about, thought about, you know, decided upon. But I do try to sway this board away from, you know, making judgments on sort of the political side and whether you like things or not. But definitely look very closely at whether the use, this retail use that's selling a product, the amount of volume, the amount of traffic, you know, that kind of stuff, is that appropriate for the site? And that's generally what the CUP criteria are for, right? So sometimes you can maybe put that lens on things to, you know, give you another piece of insight here. Ms. Hudson?
Yeah, just quickly, so I appreciate Mr. Riley's clarification of the hardship criteria. The, were the applicant here making their hardship argument only based upon the financial issue? You know, I wouldn't, I'd have a hard time with that, but that's not the only argument they're making. That's for that reason, too. I don't think that's necessarily a precedent-setting case for another future case, which may make a similar argument. So I just want to make that point.
Anybody else?
Talked it through? All right.
Mr. Chair? I did just want to let the board know that if you do decide to approve this, we did receive a letter today from Joe Mandola that all the engineering comments have been addressed.
Got it. Okay.
Just one more.
Yep.
I do welcome, I do welcome the future case, should it come to pass, that the applicant desires to reconstruct a new building on the site. That sidewalk along their frontage is narrow, and, you know, you saw the pictures, old wooden rail and stuff, it's not the best configuration, so should, and I'm just saying this for their benefit since they're here, should they come forward in the future with a site plan, we'll definitely want to work with them to try to improve that aspect of the frontage.
Okay. All right. Anybody? Mr. Bollinger?
Just a question for staff. Does today's letter supersede the stipulation in condition number three regarding the November 9th letter?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we can remove?
It can be removed from my perspective.
Okay. All right. Anybody? Mr. Bollinger?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve new business case 823-0185, conditional use permit for property located at 282 Daniel Webster Highway, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in Site Plan NRO, Section 190-133F, subject to two conditions, the first of which is the waiver request of Section 190-15D6 pertaining to facilities of primary use designated with subscript 3 shall be a minimum of 1,000 feet from like classified uses and 1,000 feet from schools or youth servicing organizations shall read is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number two, as written in the staff report.
All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Bollinger.
All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger to approve with the two stipulations as stated. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Varley. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
One, okay. All right, that motion passes. Thank you very much. I appreciate all the discussion on that. Yep, we'll take a two-minute break here. We will be right back. Next up on our agenda, new business site plan. This is case number 823-0186. This is 115 Lock Street LLC owner. It's a proposed site plan to construct a seven-unit multifamily residential building along with associated site improvements. Again, property is located at 115 Lock Street. So for the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at this application and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction?
Yes.
Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction over a new business, project 823-0186, property located at 115 Lock Street.
All right, so we have that motion to take jurisdiction of 823-0186. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board on the jurisdiction? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, done, we have jurisdiction? All right. Here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Varley, members of the board.
I think he's been demoted with Alderman.
My name is Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Hanner Swanson, 3 Congress Street here in Nashua. Here tonight representing the applicant, 115 Lock Street LLC, attorney Andy Proman. attorney Andy Proman is also with me here tonight. We're here seeking site plan approval for a seven-unit residential project located at 115 Lock Street. I've got a very brief presentation, after which I'd be happy to answer any questions. You mind bringing up the plans, Scott? So the site, 115 Lock Street, known as MAP 41, Lot 21, it's a little less than a half-acre site located in the GI General Industrial Zone. We're abutted by Lock Street and single-family residences to the north, both single-family and multifamily properties to the east. New construction of multifamily property owned by the same entity, the same group to the west, and of course, the Nashua River to the south. Although we are located in the GI Zone with RC Zone located just north of Lock Street, the neighborhood has become nearly all residential over the years. The site contains an existing two-story, single-family dwelling up along Lock Street. Remainder of the site is previously disturbed down to the riverbank and is currently maintained as lawn area. It's important to note that the property line goes to the top of the bank and not the middle of the river. This was similar to the adjacent property next door. We won't get into the survey nightmare that's involved with that. Site is currently serviced by public sewer, water by Penachalk, overhead electric and telecommunications utilities. Existing vegetation. Scott, do you mind just bringing up the, the site plan piece first? Thank you. Existing vegetation, mature trees located along the westerly property line as well as in the rear along the riverbank. Topography of the site is really dead flat for the majority before sloping very steeply down to the river in the back of the site. As with most properties in the area, no current stormwater management, so the front portion of the site drains overland into the existing street drainage and combined sewer system in Lock Street. A small rear portion of the site drains overland down that steep slope into the Nashua River. So the site is located within the city's urbanized shoreline exemption zone. Therefore, what would normally be a 75-foot prime wetland buffer technically does not exist. We've had this on a number of recent cases, most recently the Tannery Project that I've been involved in. Therefore, no special exception is needed from the zoning board. We still go to the Conservation Commission for the recommendation, but the recommendations come before this board. So as I mentioned, we're here tonight, we've got a proposal for a seven-unit project. Obviously, we'll be demolishing the existing dwelling and constructing the new building along with associated site improvements. The proposed building, it's going to be a three-story townhouse-style unit, each with a one-car garage. I did submit the building elevation. Scott, sorry to make you go back to that. These units, if you're familiar with the area, are very similar to two adjacent projects by the same group. One located at 93 Lock Street, that's a two and a three-unit building. And then, most recently, on the adjacent site, which is wrapping up construction, there's two buildings, one eight-unit and one 10-unit building. So these are going to be very similar, if not exactly the same. First floor of these buildings will feature garage, entryway, and small storage area. Living space will be on the second and third stories, two-bedroom units, fairly modest footprint, about 18 feet wide by 32 feet deep. Exterior materials include vinyl siding and shakes. There'll be at-grade patios in the rear of each of the units, and the building will be fully sprinklered. Units will be on a single lot, commonly owned, and will be under a condominium type of ownership. Open space will then be protected and maintained by the Condominium Association. Access to the site will be a new private driveway off of Lock Street. We get into these kind of funky situations where they're private driveways but not streets, but the fire department wants us to assign a street name. But take that for what it's worth, it's really a shared driveway. We do have an emergency vehicle turnaround in the back of the site to allow a fire apparatus to, to make that movement through the site, as well as some overflow parking spaces back there, four in total. So for the site, we are proposing 11 total spaces, four in the back, seven, one for each unit in their garage, which is right in between the minimum of 10 and maximum of 13 spaces required by code. As you can see from the plan, we are proposing a number of other site improvements, landscaping, site lighting, utility services, stormwater management. Of course, the site will be serviced by public sewer, water by Penachalk, gas, and underground electric and telecommunications utilities. Since we are located in the GI Zone, we did receive a use variance back in April to allow the residential use, even though, as I mentioned, this area is now predominantly residential. With regards to the wetland buffer, I mentioned we met with the CONCOM back in September, October, including a site walk. There is technically no buffer, but they do review the project. Our goal there was to redevelop the property while protecting and improving the existing buffer. So the first thing we did there was to keep majority of the redevelopment, including the buildings, outside of where that 75-foot buffer would be. The only small piece that goes in is that fire truck turnaround in the back of the site. We want to preserve existing vegetation. If you've been out to the site, there's a number of beautiful, mature trees that are located on the westerly property line or between us and the adjacent 18-unit townhouse project. We worked really hard to save those trees as part of that project. There was some limbing involved there. Those, those trees seem to be healthy and have survived that, and we're going to do the same here. Actually, one of the reasons why we're proposing to locate the, the building on the easterly side of this lot is to try to further save, save those trees and keep our impact as, as far away from those as we reasonably can here. And then the third goal would be to construct stormwater management improvements. There's currently no treatment on the site, so I'll talk about that in a second. In your packets, you should have received the CONCOM's approval letter or favorable recommendation. They had two conditions related to creating a naturalized buffer in the rear of the site with a berm, as well as some invasive species management. Both of those are acceptable for my client. Traffic, the project's traffic engineer prepared a traffic impact memo and TIR worksheet. As expected, the project really results in a minimal impact and no further study needed. There's also adequate site distance in both directions on that, that section of Lock Very quickly, stormwater, no treatment out there now, so our burden, as Mr. Petropolis mentioned on an earlier case, is to make the site better. We've got runoff from the site captured by curbing and catch basins. We've got a subsurface drainage system as well as leaching catch basins in the rear of the site. Because we really don't have a discharge point for this project, given the combined sewer on Lock Street and a steep, potentially erodible slope down to the river, we really design, over-design these to fully store and infiltrate the 100-year storm event for the river. So we expect there to be a, a large improvement in stormwater management as a result of this project. Mr. Chair, I did have one waiver request tonight, typical waiver requesting existing conditions, survey plan on abutting properties, outlined in my letter dated October 5th, 2023. I'd be happy to speak to that if there are any questions. So in summary, we believe the application is complete, conforms with the site plan regulations. We've reviewed the staff report and are okay with the conditions of approval, including the engineering and fire comments that are outstanding. And so at this time, this completes my formal presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions by the board? Got any application? Mr. Hudson?
Just please confirm that water to each unit will be individually metered?
Individual, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Cleese?
Thank you. It's, doesn't bear too much on it, but I know it'll be public water and so on, and the driveway, much like Sapphire, which is the one that's right next, this is my ward, so I'm a little bit more familiar with it. Will there be city trash pickup or because it's an association, you will have your own trashing?
Yeah, the city won't, won't pick up trash, so this will be curbed side by a private contractor.
Okay.
So everybody will have their own bin, they'll roll it out, and that's noted on the, on the plan.
Okay, I completely missed it. I actually just went looking for it. So thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Other questions for the applicant by the board? Okay. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern? Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Okay, any final questions for the applicant by the board while we're in the hearing? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing, move into the meeting. So we've just got a multi-unit condo, pretty similar to ones that we approved next door. Similar construction, looks pretty straightforward to me. Any comments? Alderman Cleese?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am always for as much housing as we can put in the city, and the way that these have been put in, kind of a long way, and versus what was there, is, is, is much nicer. It's, it's only a small number of housing, but every small number finally adds up. We have a long way to go in the city to be able to do that. That's an area that needs even more housing than you could possibly fit in there. So I appreciate this, this project, I appreciate this effort, and I have no issues with any of the requests that have been put forward.
Okay. Any other comments or discussions during the meeting? All right, anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Varley?
Mr. Ballinger? I didn't want to fight you.
No, no. It was a tie.
Well, he is an Alderman.
Sorry, sorry. I got precedence. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will make a motion to approve new business, 823-0186. And that will be with a finding that the project does meet the site plan NRO, Section 190-146D, with a total of nine stipulations. The first stipulation being a waiver request from Section 190-279EE, requiring the plan to show existing conditions, and that will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And then stipulations two through nine will read as written in the staff report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Varley. So we have that motion to approve 823-0186 with the stipulations as stated by Mr. Varley. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? Alderman Cleese?
I just wanted to add one more comment. I also appreciate the saving of those trees. It's an older community and those trees always mean a lot, so thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Then that motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So on our agenda at this point, I think we are down to just the other business. There's a tentative agenda that is, oh, thank you very much. There is a tentative agenda here from the November 13 technical review meeting. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at these items on here? And I want to make a motion as to whether there are any that may present a regional impact.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that there are no projects of regional impact based on the tech review meeting of November 13, 2023.
All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger. There are no proposals of regional impact on the tentative agenda. Do we have a second? Second by Alderman Cleese. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Then that motion passes. Okay. And I believe we are at the end of the agenda. Any discussion items for anybody here at this point? Well, how far out are we? We used to work in Dan on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Recommendations, okay. So that's out there a little bit. All right. Mr. Ballinger?
How's the December 7th agenda looking?
Um...
Similar to this one?
Um, yeah, I mean, there's...
Yeah, pretty like.
Um, one, maybe, maybe three, three projects?
That's acceptable.
Yeah. I mean, historically, we've, we've potentially done the board, you know, visit to local establishment after a meeting or something like that, so if people are up for it, next step may, that agenda may, may be okay for that.
Yeah.
So maybe we can check on that and send an email around or something.
Yes.
Yeah, so, okay. Other than that, anybody, Alderman Cleese?
Thank you. It's not related to the planning board, but it is kind of related to the city in general. On Saturday, the city is having a recount of the Board of Education, and we are seeking anybody who wants to volunteer to help with that recount. It's citywide, it's 15,000 ballots that have to be looked at, and there are eight people that have to be counted on each of those ballots. So we're trying to find 40 people who are willing to give up their Saturday, and the more we have, the faster it goes. So I just wanted to put that out to anybody that's listening. Please contact Dan Healy, 603-589-3010, or you can email him at healyd@nashuanh.gov. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Any other discussion? Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Alderman.
Alderman Cleese?
Seeing I've spoken so much, yes. I'll make that motion to adjourn. Thank you.
All right, so we have that motion to adjourn. We don't need a second on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. We're adjourned at 8:50.